Hafadei and Buenas tardes and good afternoon. Today's public hearing is conducted by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, and is called to order at this time. It is 2:10. We're a little bit tardy today because it looks as though the University of Guam has descended on your Guam Congress building. Thank you for all being here. First notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all senators and media outlets on February 21, 2025, with its second notice disseminated on February 26, 2025. The hearing notices were also made available on the Guam Legislature's website, our legislative calendar, and the government of Guam's public notice portal. This afternoon, the committee will hear testimony on Bill Number 5838-COR, introduced by Senator Vincent A. V. Borja, "An Act to Appropriate $5,750,000..." Excuse me. Seven... An act to appropriate 700... This is written wrong. Let me... "An Act to Appropriate $5,750,984 From the Fiscal Year 2025 General Revenues Collected in Excess of the Adopted Levels Enumerated in Public Law 37-125 To the University of Guam For the Purpose of Operations, Repairs, Maintenance, and Capital Improvement Projects and Accreditation-Related Priorities." At this time, I would like to welcome my colleagues who have shown up for this hearing this afternoon. Of course, the author, Senator Vince Borja, also Senator Jesse Lujan, Senator Sean Gomitalto. And that's it for today at this time. Oh, Sabrina Salas Mantenani, sorry. I guess all these university people have made me a little nervous this morning. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of the Legislature on Guam's General Rules of Conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the bill and the agenda. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from the hearing of any member of the legislature in Guam or the general public audience who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 38th Guam Legislature Standing Rules. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in the immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, we will now proceed to hear testimony on 5838. Before we do that, though, we're going to hear an opening statement from the bill's author. Senator Borja, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hafadei, first and foremost, I want to take the time to personally thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your partnership on this matter. When I was sworn in, I made the priority to meet with the agencies under my oversight, and the University of Guam was one of the first institutions I engaged with. I met with President Anita Borja Enriquez, Senior Vice President and Provost Charlene Santos Bamba, Vice President of Administration and Finance Randy Wiegand, Interim Chief of Staff Mark Mendiola, and Associate Budget and Processing Officer, Finance Administrator, Ms. Rachel Field. During these discussions, they provided a comprehensive overview of UOG's financial challenges. Specifically, they explained how UOG had initially been included in the supplemental budget proposed by the previous OFB chairman, only to be removed in the substitute version that was passed by this body. While I may be a new senator, it's evident that the political maneuvering played a role in this decision, leaving Guam's premier institution of higher learning in a precarious financial situation. The reality is that the University of Guam is facing a significant financial crisis. As outlined in their January 30, 2025 letter to my office, UOG had requested a budget of $44.9 million but was only appropriated $34.2 million, forcing them to absorb the cost of operating the Guam Cultural Repository. This reduced their net appropriation to under $32.6 million. However, the minimum required to meet their core operational expenses included faculty salaries, IT modernization, and critical repairs. Is the $33... $39.9 million, leaving them with a $5.75 million shortfall. Without intervention, the university will run out of funds by July of this year. The ramifications of this funding gap are severe. Faculty and staff positions remain vacant, necessary infrastructure repairs are delayed, and accreditation-related improvements are at risk. Furthermore, the university has been forced to divert funds intended for essential furniture and equipment for the newly constructed School of Health and Engineering, the Water and Environmental Research Institute, and the Student Success Center. An additional $2.7 million need that remains unaddressed. Bill 58-38 seeks to correct this injustice. This measure appropriates $5.750,000... $5.7 million from the fiscal year 2025 general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted levels enumerated in Public Law 37-125 to UOG for operations, repairs, maintenance, capital improvement projects, and accreditation-related priorities. The funds will help ensure that the university remains functional, competitive, and fully accredited. And I want to make it clear, this is not about politics. This is about investing in Guam's future. UOG plays a vital role in our economy, workforce development, and regional leadership. Every dollar invested in UOG generates additional revenue through tuition, research grants, and federal funding, benefiting the entire island. If we do not act now, we risk undermining the very institution that has helped shape our island's leaders, professionals, and workforce for over 70 years. I also want to take this time to thank Senators San Augustine for advocating to correct this injustice last term, his efforts in introducing Bill 58-38 this term, and now being my first co-sponsor for Bill 58-38. As a Triton myself, Sisios Massi for advocating for the university and your partnership on this matter. For these reasons, I urge my colleagues to support Bill 58-38 and provide the University of Guam with the funding it desperately needs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sisios Massi, and I agree with you. I agreed to hear this bill today, as you will note in the fiscal note. Currently, there are requests for appropriations that are over $38 million in excess of what's currently available for funding. But I myself was disappointed in the last fiscal year when UOG was removed. However, given the time and the realities of the political situation and having to pass something to make sure that we got through with helping the hospital, helping Department of Education, I endeavored in my mind, in my heart, and we're here now, to make good on the promise that I had also made to UOG to get the supplemental funding to them. But they're here now, and so we'd rather hear from them than us to support this measure and get this public hearing underway. So I'll first start on the first list, and there's quite a list, with our president, Anita Enriquez. Please identify yourself and provide your testimony.
Dear Honorable Committee Chair, Duñez, honorable members of the 38th Guam Legislature, Buenos and Hafadei, Guahu si Anita Borja Enriquez i Presidente, Ginenin Unubetsidet Guahan. Joining me this afternoon are members of our illustrious Board of Regents, as well as our student leaders, members of the alumni, our faculty, our staff, administrators, and friends. Thank you to all of them for joining us. San Dankulun and Sisios Massi for giving us an opportunity to testify on Bill Number 5838, "An Act to Appropriate $5,750,984 From the Fiscal Year 2025 General Fund Revenues Collected in Excess of the Adopted Levels Enumerated in Public Law 37-125 To the University of Guam For the Purpose of Operations, Repairs, Maintenance, Capital Improvement Projects, and Accreditation-Related Priorities." Sisios Massi, Chairman Duñez, and our Oversight Chair Borja for agreeing to prioritize our supplemental funding need at today's hearing. We extend our extreme gratitude to the co-sponsors of this bill, including all those present and you know who you are. Thank you so much. To assist our university, your university, with a much-needed supplemental investment to sustain our core operations for this FY 2025. We are grateful to others as well who will be supporting this legislation. I know our students and colleagues join me in expressing gratitude to our senators who have made recent past efforts to try to include the university in the FY 2025 Supplemental Budget, Bill Number 37-135, with strong advocacy among our student leaders from the UOG Student Government Association, our student region, and from the Guam Youth Congress. It has been evident that recognition of the sustainable value of their university, our university, is in check. Allow me to explain our current fiscal situation, which has led to the critical request for today's public hearing. Since 2018, the university's appropriation began to decrease, initially due to the Tax Cut and Jobs Act of 2017, and subsequently due to the COVID-19 global pandemic. Through the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund, we were blessed to receive federal pandemic assistance to support our students and the institution through some of UOG's low appropriation years, where the gaffs were approximately $10 million for the respective fiscal year. We knew our island's situation and understood competing government-to-agency interests that appeared more important than the university during those periods. Yet, the university pivoted each time, prioritized, and made spending sacrifices to sustain local operations. Operational costs at UOG have increased. Salaries for classified employees were adjusted by 22%, increasing personnel costs by $2.1 million. This, coupled with a long overdue faculty salary adjustment of $3.6 million, increased the local personnel costs at the University of Guam by approximately $5.7 million. The annual increase in utility costs, as well as healthcare and retirement contributions, have contributed to the fiscal challenges. This fiscal year, we were asked to include the operational budget needs for the Guam Cultural Repository, which widened our operational budget gap. The balance of meeting our mission of quality and service, as well as factors beyond our control, have impacted basic costs of personnel and utilities and have exacerbated our fiscal situation. Yet, we continue to navigate through challenging waters, grow, and advance the mission of UOG. Allow me to share the value the University of Guam has and continues to provide to our multiple community stakeholders, industry sectors, and region. We deliver high-quality offerings to support the professional industries. Specialized accreditation of our professional programs in education, nursing, engineering, social work, business, and public administration speak to the high-quality programs and faculty at UOG. The pass rate of the National Council License Your Examination for nurses or NCLEX has consistently been one of the highest in the nation for the past... for the last decade. We have graduated over 20,000 professionals. To give the breadth and depth of the professions our graduates hold, they include teachers, counselors, nurses, social workers, environmental specialists, accountants, journalists, therapists, psychologists, medical doctors, dentists, lawyers, social scientists, conservationists, financial analysts, planners, public servant leaders, small business owners, archaeologists, institution leaders, IT and computer experts, mathematicians, chemists, anthropologists, investment specialists, business, government, and nonprofit managers, and so much more. We are strategic partners and builders of the middle class, and our graduates feed into this economy. A study conducted by economist Dr. Claudette Ruane revealed that UOG contributed $1 of every $17 in Guam's economy, one in every 15 jobs in Guam, and generated $1 of every $8 of GOV-Guam tax revenues. This is an excellent and worthy return on this investment. With 25 bachelor's degree programs, 18 master's degrees, and our first doctoral degree, including 17 certificate offerings, we have been supporting the aspirations of students and professional needs of our industries at large. Giving our students access to better-paying jobs to keep them on island and to support our communities and our economy is a strategic intent that drives our passions to sustain our institution. The groundbreaking research conducted by our faculty researchers, scientists, and participating students span across social, health, natural resources, marine protections, cultural preservation, sustainability, among many other research agendas that support policies, much-needed data that drive sound decision-making are ever real. Our extension services bring valuable support for agriculture and aquaculture solutions and advancement for food security, youth and nutrition programs for healthy families and communities, mitigation of invasive species, among other types of support with leveraged federal funds round up some of the incredible added value to our general public. The university has a very broad and far-reaching activities beyond the teaching part of our mission. As a land grant and sea grant university, we bring in and leverage millions of dollars to the island to help farmers improve crop production, support communities, and safeguard coastal resources. We recently were formally recognized as a Carnegie Research University, which further elevates our recognition as a credible and respected institution that delivers relevant and high-quality research. The Cancer Research Center produces research findings to support one of Guam's pressing health challenges. The Center for Excellence in Development of Disabilities, Education, Research, and Service is the backbone of services to the disabled and is a leader in training and bringing new technologies to this community. Our nationally recognized marine laboratory is a leader in coral research, invasive marine species, fisheries, and marine resource management, among others. It is a lab that contributes to capacity building in marine science and highly sought-after by graduate students from across the globe. The Water and Environmental Research Institute partners with GWA and the Navy, among others, for the monitoring and management of the aquifer in order to sustain life on the island. In addition, the water quality testing done at our lab helps to keep our island's drinking water safe for consumption. Waste water and meteorological research are critical to our island society in Typhoon Alley. The Western Pacific Tropical Research Center manages to provide studies on solutions related to mitigating invasive species and protecting our natural resources. The Small Business Development Center builds the capacity of entrepreneurs on island. The Micronesian Area Research Center houses many historical documents on artifacts for the island and the region and serves as a primary source for genealogy resources for Micronesia, including our UOG press that has provided learning resources for the Guam Department of Education so that our cultural heritage can be passed on to our children. The Center for Island Sustainability has been working in tandem with partners across the island in efforts to create a green future for Guam. This broad portfolio has impacts all across the island, but none of it can happen without a strong university core. We shall continue to meet the relevant teaching, research, and service needs to support our island's growth and development. We hope the social contract continues to be strengthened through the support of our 38th Guam Legislature, as it was envisioned in our 1952 charter. The investment is well worth it. As appropriations diminished, the university has had to make tough decisions to scale down plans in addition to deferred maintenance, deferred hiring, combining administrative positions for dual-headed roles, and have been relying on part-time adjuncts over full-time permanent faculty that limits student engagement and student success. Responsible measures have already been taken to improve cost efficiencies and grow our enrollment. This includes strengthening our solar energy, lighting, and air conditioning systems. We have prioritized hiring replacements toward high-need areas. Our student enrollments have increased. We've increased enrollment by 3%, which is difficult to do during spring semester when high schools have not graduated until June. And while the 3% may appear small, consider that nationwide, universities are facing an enrollment cliff. We have responded to the pulse of our students and identified new activities that respond to increasing retention and persistence to graduation. However, although we have reassigned workloads and optimized production, we are still severely lacking in filling our vacancies. In closing, honorable senators, this bill will only provide funding to the salaries and benefits of people currently employed at the university. Our hard-working employees are committed to UOG's mission to serve as we all work to uplift the trajectory of our students and improve the quality of life for the people of our island and region. We are very appreciative to all of you for your incredible support and the efforts that have been made to bring this bill this far and address this exigent funding shortfall of the university. We are committed to work with the priorities of the 38th Guam Legislature to prioritize revenue enhancement and diversify revenue streams, realizing improved processes and cost efficiencies, and pivoting responsibly as we navigate the turbulent federal and local uncertainties within our waters and the path ahead. The success of our university, your university, will continue to strengthen the future for generations to come. Sisios Massi, and con respetu.
Sisios Massi, Dr. Enriquez, Madam President, for your testimony. So I noticed some of my sign-in sheets is a little bit out of order. So Randy, I'm going to go with you, then continue to my left, and then come back to Leslie and go to my right. So Randy, please proceed.
I'm just here for questions answered, answering questions.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, may I ask one of our valle de turian's, Dr. Edison Maniloto, to... He's only here to provide oral testimony, but he's got to go back to the hospital by 2:30. May I?
Sure, absolutely. Randy, maybe he can take your seat for a moment?
Hi. Good afternoon, Chairman Duñez, members of the committee. Thank you for giving this opportunity to testify. Today, you'll hear a lot of testimony, a lot of figures, of why the university deserves this money. A lot of this facts or these statements could be debated. I'm going to speak today of what I know to be the truth, and I'll share to you guys a story. In 1990, a young family came to Guam. Father was a construction worker, getting a job at Fletcher Pacific, and the mother was, you know, she was a teacher. But because her coming from the Philippines, the credentials, she couldn't be a teacher here. Worked as a secretary, had four little boys. Those four little boys went to public school. Three of them, you know, times were hard. 1990, you had Super Typhoon Omar. During those times, when you had aid, you know, the food stamps, they were like little plain money. They were very colorful. So to say times were tough for this family was an understatement. Now, fast... Three of them end up going to the university. And fast forward to 2025, one of them's a doctor, one of them's a nurse at GMH, another one is a lieutenant colonel for the Guam Army National Guard. That story is the story of my family. It's something I know to be true. To say that the impact of the university has been significant on our family is an understatement. It's been quite transformative, to say the least. And the story of my family reflects not just us, but a similar story to the 20,000-plus graduates of this university and how it has transformed the lives, not just economically of these families, but lifted them off from poverty, off from assistance, and more importantly, the values of the university. I always go back to them. It's to discover, to enlighten, but I think the most important value that this university impacts on us. And, you know, there's a lot of smart people. The university not only teaches minds, but shapes hearts, but it's to serve. It is to serve the community, and that's why I stand here today in full support of this measure. I thank the author and all the co-sponsors because I think we tend to forget that within the confines, you know, numbers could be on a sheet, on a spreadsheet, but contained within these... It's a beautiful bill, very simple, very elegant. Are the hopes, dreams, and opportunities? And it is precisely this mission to serve that I purposely made it a point to come down here, to give every little boy or girl the same opportunity that we were given, which is affordable higher education. Because frankly, without the resources that this university needs, they will have to raise tuition, which would mean pushing that dream, those hopes, those aspirations, on pause for a lot of families and for whom much is given, much is expected. And that's the reason why I come down here pleading with you guys to support the university, its mission, and any investment in our people is a worthwhile investment. Sisios Massi.
Sisios Massi to you, Dr. Maniloto. That very compelling and excellent testimony, and we thank you for becoming a doctor and serving on Guam, and now we know patients are waiting for you. So God bless you, and thank you for coming, and we appreciate your testimony. Ma'am, please proceed. Identify yourself for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hafadei, Mr. Chair, I'm here for questions also after testimony. Thank you.
Okay, Leslie, you're up.
Okay. Hafadei, Chair Duñez, Senator Lujan, Senator Gomitalto, Senator Borja, and Senator Salas Mantenani, and I believe we were just joined by Senator Calvo. Thank you for making time for us this afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the University of Guam Board of Regents in strong support of Bill 58-38. This bill is about investing in the future of our island and our students, who will become Guam's next nurses, engineers, teachers, and legislators. It recognizes the power of knowledge, research, and creativity in driving our community forward. Our vision is transforming lives, advancing communities. As Regents, we are part of the process of launching students towards greatness, with many achieving prestigious graduate program acceptances and national recognition. We are proud of our designation by the U.S. News &amp; World Report as one of the top colleges for social mobility, helping students from humble beginnings transition into higher economic levels. However, the university is in dire need of help. In September of last year, the university, after much effort, could not provide the board with a balanced budget. Existing employee costs, rising insurance premiums, software licensing, audit fees, and rising utility costs exceeded the funding levels appropriated by over more than $5.7 million. With classes started and tuition accepted, the university could not meet its commitments. The board accepted a rollover budget and continued last year's expenditure levels while working with the Guam Legislature, many of who are here today, to secure additional funding. Today, those efforts continue, and that is what brings us before you. We are grateful for the efforts of Senator Borja, Senator San Augustine, Senator Duñez, and everybody here today who have supported this legislation. We hope this marks the beginning of a productive relationship to enable UOG to continue to fill our mission of Ina Disco Bree Septi, to enlighten, to discover, and to serve, developing Guam's workforce and the next generation of leaders. The University of Guam is not just an institution of learning, it is a pillar of our community, shaped by the passion of our students, the dedication of our faculty and staff, and the unwavering support of our alumni. Our graduates have gone on to lead, to innovate, and to give back to this island in countless ways, some of which many of you can personally attest to. The nurses saving lives in our hospitals, and now, just the words of Dr. Maniloto, the doctor in our hospitals saving lives, the small business entrepreneurs driving our economy, the educators shaping our young minds, and the policymakers such as yourselves guiding our island's future. UOG alumni have proven time and time again that an investment in education is always a good investment for Guam. Today, you will witness the spirit of young leaders in action. Our student leaders, many of which are here today, actually sitting to my left, have consistently advocated for their university, demonstrating the critical thinking we need in our community. Although it is disheartening that they must fight for access to strong, well-funded education, it has taught them valuable lessons in advocacy and leadership. Now, I ask that... Now I ask that we show them that the system works by committing to work together and exploring new innovative ways to continue to shape the institution that Guam has so many reasons to be proud of. Thank you. Sidoos Masih.
Sidoos Masih, Leslie. And so we'll continue now with the next person signed up to testify. Please proceed.
Wenison Hoffa Day, Honorable Senators of the Thirty-Eighth Guam Legislature. My name is Nicole Guerrero, the Sixty-Third Student Government Association President for the University of Guam. My testimony today reflects my utmost support for Bill Number Fifty-Eight dash Thirty-Eight, which stands to appropriate $5.7 million to the University of Guam in order to address the longtime deferred projects at the university and support maintenance of basic operations in order to keep the university afloat. First, I would like to take the time to thank our oversight chairperson, Senator Borja, for introducing this bill, as well as the bill's cosponsors, Chairperson Duñez, Senator Luhon, Senator Calvo, Senator Gumatautau, Senator Munia Barnes, and Senator San Augustine, for leading the initiative in supporting the University of Guam. Bill Number Fifty-Eight dash Thirty-Eight comes at a critical time for the university. In the months that I have served as the Student Government Association President, I have given testimony in two public hearings and held a student rally advocating for the need to fund the only four-year accredited university in the Western Pacific. I have sat in countless meetings with the leadership, faculty, and staff of the University of Guam, discussing on how we will continue operations with what we have been given. The bottom line is this. For years, the students at the University of Guam have been acutely aware of the financial struggles the university faces, given the continued decline in budget appropriations for the university. Critical repair and maintenance projects have gone unaddressed, dating back to Typhoon Muar. There have been delays and freezes on hiring much-needed faculty and staff. We have had to reevaluate and scale back certain student activity offerings. And most importantly, we have had to address and implement looming increases in student fees and tuition to supplement the deficit in our budget appropriation. The need for additional funding is something that impacts everyone at the university, not just our administration, not just our faculty, not just our staff. And I hope that you can agree with me when I say that students should not have to constantly worry about the financial situation of their university. Nor should they be concerned that the maintenance projects of their campus is going unaddressed. But unfortunately, that is the reality we are facing. And our students are aware of the dire financial situation that the university is in and how it directly impacts them. That's why we're all here today. To share a little about me, I graduated from Ukuru High School in 2021. I was fortunate enough to have received admission into off-island colleges. But instead, instead of going off-island, leaving my home, I chose to stay here. Since then, I have been a loud advocate for the university and how there is no need to leave your home to pursue a better future. You can pursue a better future here on our island through the University of Guam. We have produced some of the best and brightest students that have gone on to have exceptional careers and achievement, both here and off-island. Our students are competitive applicants when they apply to off-island jobs, internships, and scholarships. We have brought back awards and accolades that put us up to par with some of the most recognizable colleges in the nation. But in order to maintain this, in order to ensure our university is competitive, to ensure that it can continue to provide for our students, and to ensure that we can keep growing and improving as a community, we need the support of our government. I have heard time and time again from our leaders that the youth and our students are the future of our island. Well, we're here today, and we're asking for our legislature to pay attention to us, to show up for us, and to listen to us. The University of Guam is a cornerstone of our island community. It is a place of innovation and progress. It is this island's future. This bill doesn't just mean funding the University of Guam. It means supporting our island's future. It means showing our students and the youth that they matter in this island. And it means showing them that they are also a priority. Which is why I greatly urge the passage of Bill Number Fifty-Eight dash Thirty-Eight. Please show the youth that they are also a priority in our island. Sidoos Masih.
Sidoos Masih, Nicole. Very nice testimony. And we'll continue.
Yes, thank you. Wenison Hoffa Day, Chairperson and Honorable Senators on the floor. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you to testify on this bill. My name is Julie Laksamana, and I'm a graduating senior of the University of Guam and a student member of the Board of Regents. In 2024, alongside the Student Government Association, we organized a student-led rally in hopes of reaching our senators on the importance of the $4 million that was withdrawn from the substitute bill. And since then, the university has looked and enacted different avenues to increase its local revenue. And with the current federal administration causing a lot of uncertainty with its federal aid, these local funds hold a lot more significant weight and impact for our students. Give or take, almost 60% of our student demographic consists of low-income or Pell Grant-dependent individuals who need to lean on local and federal assistance to go through their bachelor's journey. I am one of those students who had to heavily rely on my merit scholarship to complete my last four years. And just like many of them, when I came to the university in 2021, I enrolled because my parents simply wanted me to. And looking back on it now, I have no regrets about investing in my higher education, even if it started, you know, initially to please my parents. Like any typical student, I came to UOG seeking change. And now I'm leaving with a clear sense of purpose. And it was through the guidance of my faculty mentors, the unique opportunities offered, and the endless hours invested from this community in ensuring that I meet my graduation goals that shaped me to be the person that I am today, which is the 2024 Truman Scholar and a former White House intern. And through this community, I found my sense of belonging and purpose, which is to give back to our island. Like many of you who are UOG alumni or have been involved in the university in some way, shape, or form, and have done remarkable things for our island, I want to use my passion to make a difference here on Guam. Measures like these impact students who come from similar beginnings to mine and limit the potential they could have reached if they had more resources. Choosing to support UOG means investing in the next generation of talented, competent professionals for Guam and beyond. And ultimately, when bills like these are on the floor, it's for the students and the quality and resources available to them. One of the things we're looking forward to at the end of this year is the four buildings going to be active. With this, we expand our expertise that allows for the locals to stay on island while developing their knowledge in engineering, other areas of nursing, and further their research in marine biology. We've been receptive to the constructive criticism of our stakeholders and have proven that we have been capable and responsible for fostering these kinds of positive changes. We look towards this new administration now to be the one that fulfills the promise of supporting our local and regional students, so they too can be productive members in the community, leading with merit and pride for our island. When I exit out of this university, I hope that those after me are also able to experience the true value of what it means to be a Triton and the quality of academics and opportunities that it offers. And with this, I fully support Bill Fifty-Eight dash Thirty-Eight. And I'm deeply grateful for the Oversight Chairperson Borja and the cosponsors, Chairperson Duñez, Senator Luhon, Senator Calvo, Senator Gumatautau, Senator Munia Barnes, and Senator San Augustine, for championing this measure for our students and for prioritizing higher education. Thank you.
Sidoos Masih, Julie. Thank you for your testimony. Please proceed.
Test. Wenison Hoffa Day, Chairman Duñez, and the Honorable Senators on the floor. My name is Kiana Ardience, and I currently serve as the Vice President of the Student Government Association. I am also a veteran and, above all, a proud Triton. And the University of Guam has provided me with invaluable opportunities. That's why I stand before you today in strong support of Bill Fifty-Eight dash Thirty-Eight, which proposes a $5.7 million appropriation for critical maintenance and capital projects at our university. My experience at UOG has been transformative. It has honed my leadership, problem-solving, and interpersonal skills, all of which are essential in moving the island forward. We, the students, are deeply invested in the well-being of our community. Contrary to some beliefs, we are acutely aware of the challenges facing Guam: affordable housing, infrastructure, and rising utility costs. These are not abstract issues. They directly impact our lives and futures, and frankly, they cause us significant anxiety. However, we are indeed progressing forward, and that's exciting. We are seeing the construction of four new buildings: the Wery Research Center, the Dr. Lucio C. Ten Student Success Center, the Margaret Perez Hattori Uchima School of Health Nursing Annex, and the School of Engineering. As a double major in public administration and communication, I am deeply invested in the success of all our programs, even those outside my immediate field. While I'm excited about the new School of Engineering, a crucial question remains: Where will the students sit? What materials and equipment will students be able to use at the new School of Engineering building? These new buildings highlight the urgent need for investment in our university's infrastructure. It's not just about erecting structures, it's about maintaining them effectively. We've seen a concerning trend. As our campus grows, our custodial staff shrinks. We've had more custodians when we had fewer buildings. This bill offers a vital opportunity to address this staffing shortage and ensure our facilities are properly maintained. Furthermore, we cannot ignore the existing maintenance issues plaguing our campus. Leaky roofs, faulty air conditioning systems, and deteriorating window seals are not conducive to a productive learning environment. Not only do students deserve a clean and operational space to study and attend classes, but our dedicated faculty and staff deserve it as well. Financial pressures affect many of our students, particularly those in the middle class who don't qualify for aid. Yet, the high value placed on a UOG education makes the sacrifices necessary for many students to succeed. We cannot expect our students to thrive if their learning environment is neglected. At UOG, we are taught to be Tritons, individuals who identify problems, take action, and see those actions through to completion. This bill presents a clear opportunity to address critical infrastructure needs at our university. I understand that many of you are UOG alumni or have taught at UOG, and I implore you to embrace that Triton spirit once more. Recognize the pressing needs for these funds, act decisively by supporting Bill Fifty-Eight dash Thirty-Eight, and follow through by ensuring that the university has the resources it needs to thrive. This investment is an investment in the future of Guam and in the students who will lead it. I'd like to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to Senator Vincent Borja for his tireless dedication to our island community and his unwavering commitment to advancing higher education on Guam. I'd also like to extend my appreciations to the cosponsors of this bill, including Senators Joe San Augustine, Christopher Duñez, Tina Munia Barnes, Jesse Luhon, Shelley Calvo, and Senator Gumatautau, as well as the entire Thirty-Eighth Legislature for their collective efforts to make a positive impact on our island home. I'd also like to extend an invitation to all of the members of the Thirty-Eighth Legislature to join us at the University of Guam's Fifty-Seventh Charter Day Celebration. This special event will feature a showcase of traditional huts crafted by our cultural student organizations, highlighting the rich diversity of our campus community. And we'd be delighted to have you join us and experience the unique cultural heritage of our island. And if you do intend to go, food's on me. And that's pretty much it. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to testify, and thank you for your leadership guidance and continued advocacy for the University of Guam. Biba Yogi.
Biba Yogi. Sidoos Masih, Kiana. So at this time, if we can make room for at least three more that are coming up to testify, however you want to arrange yourselves. So I got Chris Perez, please come forward. Also, Arissa Bergonia and Dr. Zenny Ascencion. Please come forward. Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wenison Hoffa Day, Honorable Senators of the Thirty-Eighth Guam Legislature. My name is Chris Perez, and I'm proud to serve as a staff member at the University of Guam. Alongside, I'm also an alumnus and a current graduate student at the university. First, I want to sincerely thank the Senators Vincent Borja, Joe San Augustine, Christopher Duñez, Tina Munia Barnes, Jesse Luhon, Shelley Calvo, and Shawn Gumatautau for sponsoring Bill Fifty-Eight Thirty-Eight. I also want to extend my gratitude to Senator Christopher Duñez, Chairman of the Committee on Finance and Government Operations, along with the dedicated staff members who organized this public hearing. Lastly, I appreciate the opportunity to share my testimony in support of Bill Fifty-Eight Thirty-Eight, which is vital for sustaining the University of Guam's operations through the end of fiscal year 2025. Having been involved in multiple levels within the university, I've witnessed the honest commitment of our people to the mission of the university: to enlighten, to discover, and serve. With the guidance of our strategic plan, Tulos Montya, the university empowers our students and the entire community of Guam and beyond with high-value education, research, and outreach programs. The relentless dedication of our university's students and employees profoundly transforms our island home Guam and the surrounding region. The University of Guam has enlightened many, including myself, my family, friends, and colleagues, by offering countless opportunities to discover knowledge and build skills. And this transformation is made possible through our unique people, quality degree programs, innovative research, and impactful outreach programs, all led by our students, faculty, staff, and administrators in collaboration with local, federal, and regional partners, such as the Guam Legislature, for their continued support. I firmly believe that education is essential for fostering knowledge, wisdom, skills, abilities among our people. It empowers us all in ensuring that we can compete and thrive together while preventing stagnation in our society. Many of our people, students, faculty, staff, administrators, alumni, and stakeholders are actively involved in public agencies, nonprofit organizations, and private businesses within our community and bringing with them the valuable experience gained from their time at the university. Our contributions greatly impact the lives of many individuals and our environment. And this bill represents as an investment not only in the present and future operations of the University of Guam, but also in the hopes, dreams, and aspirations of the people of Guam who call this island home. Moreover, this bill serves as a crucial economic lifeline for our students, many of whom dream of transforming their lives and becoming future leaders and responsible citizens who can make meaningful contributions to our society. This bill will also sustain the livelihoods of about 580 full-time and over 400 part-time public servants, as well as the families who rely on our support in serving the community, our students, and the island at large. Without this bill, many students may face reduced services, and numerous employees will struggle to provide necessary support for their family's health and well-being. The university has a proven track record of delivering positive returns in investments in Guam through job creation, increased tax revenues, and meaningful contributions to our economy, education, governance, and more. This investment will significantly enhance the university's capacity to nurture an environment where everyone can succeed, maintain a healthy community for all stakeholders, and continue to be an accessible higher learning that serves our people, our island, our home, and our Guam. Biba Yogi and Biba Guam. Thank you.
Biba. Thank you, Mr. Perez. Before I move on, I'd like to welcome our other senator that has joined us this afternoon. Senator Calvo, thank you for being here. Doc, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chairman Duñez, Senators Calvo, Senator Luhon, Senator Gumatautau, and Senator Borja. We lost Senator Mantenani, but that's okay. I'm here in support of Bill Fifty-Eight Thirty-Eight. My name is Zenny Ascencion. I'm a CPA from the state of California and in Guam. I earned my PhD from the University of Alaska Fairbanks. I'm a certified government financial manager, a certified fraud examiner, a certified forensic accountant, and an accredited investment fiduciary for over 25 years of professional experience. I currently teach at the University of Guam School of Business and Public Administration, having taught since 2008. So you can guess my age at that time. On subjects like auditing, fraud examination, fraud investigation and forensics, and two of the four parts of a CPA Examination Review Course, namely auditing and business economic concepts. I come before you, dear senators, to support Bill Fifty-Eight Thirty-Eight specifically on the accreditation-related priorities. UOG has a long history of academic excellence, having earned a distinguished accreditation through 2032, bestowed by the Western Association of Schools and Colleges, Senior College and University Commission for all of its academic subjects and academic programs. And I'd say UOG is close to my heart, having been their controller for 12 years under the presidency of Robert Underwood, and earned my Master's in Business Administration 15 years ago. And as a matter of fact, I have here beside me my mentor... And as a matter of fact, I have here beside me my mentor and instructor of marketing, Dr. Anita Enriquez, who has pursued, who has, how do you call this, made me pursue my PhD. So, you say, what am I doing here? You know, I'm retired from the Department of Education as the Deputy Superintendent for Financial Affairs. What am I doing here? UOG has always been my home, so to speak, and I believe that I can support the mission and vision of the university to support their students, graduating students, to pursue their dreams, to pursue their goals, and I would like to be a part of that. The School of Business Educators Team has been staffed with local professionals who have earned both solid experience and exposure to Guam culture, diversity, and economic landscape. These qualities of instructors have contributed to obtaining UOG's prestigious accreditation. The UOG has been instrumental in building the professional workforce for all industries, building capacity as a matter of fact, including those serving the higher education in the faculty section of the university. So I support the effort of this committee to consider prioritizing hiring qualified local candidates to fill faculty vacancies, that is, local accredited credential professionals to be utilized first in filling university teaching positions before searching outside of Guam. That's all I have to tell you guys. So thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Sincerely, Dr. Zany Asensio. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Asensio. And so, Arissa Borja, is Arissa Borja? No? Okay, I had it signed up to testify. So we're moving on on the list here. Doreen Crisostomo Munya and Chris Garcia Santos. Ms. Munya, please proceed.
Hello, Hafade. Hafade, Honorable Chairman, Senator Chris Duennas, and members of the committee, thank you, thank you all for still sticking around. My name is Doreen Crisostomo Munya, Vice President of the 24th Faculty Senate at the, at the University of Guam. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to support, in support of Bill Number 58-38, which allocates about 5.8 million to help with the existing staffing costs and to cover the operational costs for the Guam Culture Repository for fiscal year 2015. In the past, the GCR received its funding separately from UOG. If you're wondering why 3.58 in accounting, I teach accounting, we round to the nearest hundred thousand. These funds are critical for maintaining the quality of our academic programs and cultural initiatives that benefit our students, faculty, and the community. Our dedicated faculty and staff are necessary to provide a world-class education. The GCR helps preserve and share Guam's rich cultural heritage, housing valuable artifacts and documents that connect us to the island's tradition and history. While this bill helps with some critical needs, it does not cover other ongoing challenges like updating technology, filling staffing vacancies, or addressing building maintenance. The rising cost of running the university has outpaced the available funding, creating a gap that affects our ability to, to offer essential services. I respectfully request an additional 6.6 million to keep providing, to keep providing excellent education and services, and here's why. IT modernization. Technology is constantly changing, and UOG needs to keep up. Updating our IT systems will help create a better and more effective learning environment. These changes will improve students' outcome and better prepare graduates for the future. Our planned upgrades include moving to the cloud-based services, upgrading equipment, and enhancing the cyber, cybersecurity. Additionally, we need to implement a digital syllabus software to improve communication among students, faculty, and administrators for consistency across campus. This will cost about 2.4 million. Staffing vacancies. As a proud UOG graduate, I can attest that our accreditation is a significant source of pride. It assures students receive a high-quality education recognized both nationally and internationally. As a faculty member, I witness firsthand the importance of updating these standards from curriculum development to faculty qualification. To remain competitive and maintain the reputation of our degrees, we aim to fill at least 50% of the vacancies and implement the faculty face-in adjustments. This initiative will lessen the workload for current faculty while ensuring the delivery of high-quality education. The cost is estimated at 3.2 million. Maintenance and repairs. UOG must keep its facilities in good condition to provide a safe and functional learning environment. Well-maintained buildings are critical for teaching, and neglecting maintenance can lead to a more significant, more expensive problems down the line. When budgets are tight, maintenance often takes a backseat, resulting in a deteriorating infrastructure and negatively impacting the learning environment, reputation, and most importantly, the students' experience. We need to upgrade the fire alarm system and replace generators, which will cost approximately $1 million. For many of us, UOG is not just a university. It is an important part of the community. It supports local businesses, trains professionals to contribute to our island, and help address our unique challenges. As a faculty member, I am committed to our students' success and the ongoing growth of UOG. Our graduates go to make meaningful contribution across the diverse sectors, from healthcare to business, public service, education, social work, engineering, science, and beyond. These individuals are the backbone of Guam's economy and society. The success of UOG has a direct and lasting impact on our future community. I fully support the 5.8 million proposal and ask for an additional 6.6 million to help with the IT upgrades, staffing, and maintenance. Your support will help us provide top-notch education while preserving our cultural heritage. Thank you for your time and support for this critical legislation. I just want to make a note that all these testimonies that has been coming, that has been spoken before, the 6.6 million will address those issues. Just want to let you know. Because the 5.8 million is only addressing the Guam bodies and the cultural repository. Thank you very much, Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi, Ms. Munya. And that was a very large roundup. I was gonna round to 5.8 with my difficulties when I opened up, but that's quite a round.
Yeah, that was in addition of 6.6. And just, I just want to add too, Dr. Manalotl, he was my student. So do you see, we produce good students and graduates. He now is a doctor. Thank you.
You certainly do. We'll start with this and see how round we can get. Mr.?
Hafade.
Chris Santos.
Hafade Senators, my name is Christopher Bolhaja Garcia Santos, and I serve as the President of the Faculty Senate along with Doreen Crisostomo Munya. So she, Doreen has mentioned, you know, we, we spoke about the, you know, sorry, before I go. Thank you Senators Ada, Senator Borja, Senator Gumatauto, Senator Luhon, Senator Calvo, right? And thank you Chair Senator Duennas. We spoke about that and, and the 6.6 million, right? That, that additional. And so I have three points that I want to make. One of them is, is related to that. The first one is, thank you Senators for your continued investment in the university. I want to express this deep appreciation for the legislature's ongoing investment. Your, your support ensures that the university can continue fulfilling its mission, providing meaningful, quality education, fostering research that benefits our island community, and developing a skilled workforce for, that our island and our regional communities need. We recognize that financial challenges impact all government agencies, and we know that funding decisions, the work that you have to do, is not easy, is never easy. We see that too on our end as we have, have had meetings to adjust and respond to budget funding levels. This is why we don't take support, or why we don't take any of, any of these kinds of support for granted. We remain committed to being responsible stewards of public funds, ensuring that every dollar invested in UOG benefits our students, supports our faculty, and these are investments into our future, or for our future of our island. The evidence of our, of our responsible fiscal stewardship is seen in the clean audit reports that UOG has a history of achieving. Those clean audit reports reflect our current, our careful financial management, and we are committed to transparency and accountability in, in our, in all of our spending. Your continued funding is not just an investment in, in higher education, it is an investment in Guam's growth, in innovating our island way of life, improving the quality of our life, and ensuring stable government services that benefit all of our peoples. I'd like to say especially thank you for listening to the university community, for taking the time to come up to the, to the, come up to Mingilao, to visit us in Mingilao, to deepen your knowledge of, to deepen your knowledge of the extent of UOG's work, right? The second thing I'd like to say is to reaffirm the faculty's commitment to excellence. Like you, we also hear our community. We are listening and responding to our community needs. I want to reaffirm that the faculty at the university remain deeply committed to our students and to our community. We are not just educators, we are mentors, we're researchers, we're active participants in shaping this next generation of leaders, and we are members of our community, our island and regional communities. So despite financial constraints, we continue to innovate our curriculum, we look for ways to meaningfully support students, and we adapt to these ever-changing workforce conditions. We recognize that, we recognize also the challenges that our students face, many of whom juggle work, juggle family responsibilities, juggle their, along with their education. Our faculty work tirelessly to ensure that every student, whether fresh out of high school or returning to the university for a second career, receives the support they need to succeed. And not just succeed to graduation, to commencement, but to apply what they've applied for a lifetime, what they've achieved with us, what they've learned with us during their time at the university. My colleagues, my faculty colleagues have stepped up in many new ways, seeking grant funding, developing partnerships, finding innovative solutions to address our financial and academic challenges. While grants provide essential resources for research and specific projects, projects, they don't fund operations or infrastructure. For the university to continue functioning smoothly, stable legislative funding is critical. And thank you for bringing us here today and listening to us. The last thing I'd like to share, to say is related to what VP Doreen was mentioning, right? If you have extra money, right? So the, the need for sustained and, and increased funding. So while we're grateful for the 5.8, I rounded up to 5.8 million in supplemental funding, I just want to add this plug, that any additional support would make a significant difference. And VP Doreen provided a list of those additional improvements that we're looking to make. The reality is that the university continues to operate under these, under tight financial constraints, and every additional dollar helps us maintain operations, helps us improve our facilities, and enhance student services. With less than optimal funding levels, we face real concerns about delayed maintenance, faculty retention, and the continuity of essential programs. Some of my colleagues have expressed genuine worries, concerns that if funding shortfalls persist, we could see disruptions in operations. This is not the outcome that we want, and this is not the outcome that I don't, nobody wants, right? Investing in UOG is about, is not just about keeping the lights on, it is about ensuring that we continue producing skilled professionals, advancing research, and strengthening the economic and social fabric of our island. Investing in UOG means ensuring learning and researching is supported with safe and clean facilities. Investing in UOG means ensuring that our university is best positioned to meet and exceed accreditation standards. Investing in UOG means continuing, means ensuring continuity of operations so that the nearly 3,000 students who seek a bachelor, master, and now a doctoral degree from UOG will be able to do so. To close, I'd like to thank you again for prioritizing higher education. The University of Guam plays a critical role in shaping our island's future, and with your continued support, we can ensure that students receive a meaningful, quality education, that faculty remain at the forefront of innovation, and the university continues to serve as a hub for research, economic development, and community engagement. Thank you, and Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Santos, and I'd like to take the time now to also welcome our Vice Speaker, Vice Speaker Tony Ada, who is also the Vice Chairman of this committee. Thank you, Senator Ada, for joining us. So moving on to the next that have signed up to testify, Tamesha Aflegui, can you please come forward? Can we also have Acapito Diaz? Is Acapito here? And also Nolan Munya. Is Nolan here? Thank you, Nolan. Okay, so we'll start in the order of sign up. So Ms. Tamesha, please.
Hafade, dan buenas tardes, todo hamzu, most especially our members of the 38th Guam Legislature. Thank you for sticking through all of our stories. My name is Tamesha Frankis Aflegui. I did my legal name, as did Chris, so I'll put that up forward. I'm Associate Professor of Nutrition and the Coordinator of the FNEP and SNAP Ed Community Nutrition Education Programs. I'm here to speak to express my strong support, as well as my colleagues, for Bill 58-38, which seeks to appropriate 5.7 million, I'll keep to what's on paper, that is vital for the continuity of our work efforts that serves this community. Our first two testimonials had spoke and uplifted our most secret arm of a land-grant institution, and it's what makes us a land-grant institution, that of which is service, which you might know as cooperative extension. My primary role at the university is extension faculty, which uniquely bridges research and teaching to carry forward and extend that research into the classroom and the community needs into research. In addition, it is the pillar that, that carries forward intellectual resources into the community to address its needs. We do this by building and nurturing partnerships, and to, to, in order to do this valued work, we need the operational core UOG base funding that everyone has spoke to about today. That base funding covers our human capacity and our physical infrastructure. I'd like to talk a little bit about our extension services, which you might know in our community that plays a significant role in educating our communities about healthy living, agriculture, youth development, and food security. As you know, and are testament of, UOG is committed to critical issues such as nutrition, diabetes, noncommunicable diseases, subsistence agriculture, local food promotion, youth empowerment, and community development. I believe UOG has demonstrated our ability to effectively manage and leverage funds, advancing the core funding, and doing this by bringing new and more programs and partners together. Existing partnerships that we have are with the Department of Public Health and Human Services that addresses food and nutrition security and NCDs, or noncommunicable diseases, including the implementation of SNAP Ed, which you heard Dr. Manalotl refer to as food stamps, is now called SNAP. And as of 2022... And as of 2016, we have funding that provides education for SNAP recipients and those eligible for SNAP. It also includes FNEP, cancer outreach and prevention programs, prediabetes and diabetes lifestyle programs, and senior congregant meals to include local produce. Our agriculture extension professionals have provided direct one-to-one farm-based technical support, promotion of home gardening and subsistence agriculture, value-added product development, partnered with agricultural industry groups such as Farmers Co-op, Micronesian Chefs Association, Soil and Water Conservation Districts, and local and federal agencies in agriculture professional training. One of our key stone youth development programs, 4H, actively engages and cultivates the next generation of leaders by working closely with youth in hands-on learning experiences that build practical skills and foster personal development in diverse settings like classroom-based enhancement activities, school gardens, and one of our most popular, the Fisheries Program. Who's participated in the Fisheries Program here? Raise your hand. Okay, very good. Not in the front, but in the back. You got me. I furthermore want to share that you yourself may not feel like a direct recipient of our extension programs, but I'm confident that you know someone who has been a recipient of our extension services. And that is the pulse of our university, making it a land-grant institution. And I want to emphasize that we incorporate real-time scenarios into the classroom because the faculty in extension, as well as research, are those same faculty that teach our agriculture and nutrition programs. So in real-life experiences, they bring that into the classroom and likewise, provide opportunities for students to have experiential learning and employment long after our class is done. In conclusion, your immediate support of Bill 5838 will ensure our operations throughout this fiscal year so these essential programs and initiatives go uninterrupted. Your support will directly contribute to enhancing food security, promoting health and wellness, and creating opportunities for youth, ultimately enriching the lives of all residents in Guam. So as the earlier testimonies, I implore you to join us next Thursday at Charter Day, specifically at the hidden gem of the Agriculture and Life Science Building, where extension programs will be featured. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Sidoos Masih, Ms. Aflegui. Before I proceed, I just wanted to make sure that I recognize former Senator Judy Guthers, Dr. Guthers, and I'm sure a very strong advocate of University of Guam. You'll be coming up, you'll be coming up when I call in the next panel, a senator, so in just a moment. Sidoos Masih for joining us. So next, we will move on to Acapito.
Thank you, Senator, for having me today and also the Committee on Finance Government Operations. It's good to see you all. I am, my name is Acapito Diaz. I am the vice chair. I sit on the Board of Regents. I am also a proud alumnus of the University of Guam. And, you know, I guess what I'm going to present to the, to the committee today is obviously my experience with the university. Having served on the university, I do see the hard work that the administration puts into making sure that they take value of all the taxpayer dollars of the government of Guam and making sure that it's effectively used to instruct the students at the university. You know, I am also a civil engineer. I, and, and I'm very proud that we are now have a fully accredited civil engineering program at the University of Guam. And being in the industry, I could tell you how much industry needs the graduates from that program to help build the new infrastructure and facilities here in Guam. You know, the university is making a lot of headway into striving for excellence and making sure the facilities that we're bringing onboard is really driving the success, not only for the university, but also for the island, but also for the Pacific region. I fully support this, this bill. And again, if you guys have any other questions for me, I'll also be here to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your testimony. Nolan, please proceed.
Ah, there we go. It's not generally thought that opening with an apology is indicative of strength, but dispenses U-Machamoro pronunciation is still a work in progress. Guahu si Nolan Munia, zan guahu chamoro diasporu. Estudiantes u, gi unebetsa dat guahan, gi zamangilao. Sumasagagi itzaham. Dormtu, gi residence halls. I am a Chamorro Studies for Education major, and until moving here, I had never heard chamorro spoken aloud. My father tried to teach us conversational chamorro when we were very young, but his educational toolkit functions best in fields other than language and linguistics. There exists no curriculum like that of the Chamorro Studies Department anywhere else in the world. This curriculum, known affectionately and accurately as uniquely UOG, is my access point to the chamorro culture and language. I moved here in August having never been here before without any real support network beyond acceptance to UOG and a contract to live at the residence halls. Many people react to my story in a way that causes me to believe that my story is extraordinary, but I would rather my pathway be accessible and financially feasible in order for others to replicate it. My educators and the significant cultural treasury of knowledge dispersed gi unebetsa dat guahan, coincidentally near the cultural repository, are worth completing your promise and funding. And I am telling you today the circumstances you need to hear in order retain other folks considering the move to Guam. But maybe you need the opportunity to experience student life again. To that end, I invite you individually or collectively to attend my classes with me or to spend a weekend at the dorms. You can tell me afterwards if you don't believe these funds are vital to the continued pursuit of excellence in education at Unebetsa Dat Guahan. Thank you.
Sidoos Masih, Mr. Munia. Zan kontol gua, guanabai, di 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 fino chamorro lo, utazaga kadedia. Sidoos Masih para i testimonio. So we'll go on to the next panel members, and please come up, please make some room for the next individuals. Ms. Katrina Perez, please come forward. Jesse Leon Guero, please come forward as well. And of course, Senator Dr. Judy Guthers. Please join the panel. Ms. Perez, please proceed.
Forgive me, I was, I was expecting just to turn in the written testimonial, but let me, let me switch glasses.
I was, I was provided with the list of additional.
Oh, maybe better without my glasses. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. And thank you so much also for introducing this bill. As an alumna of the University of Guam and executive director of the UOG Endowment Foundation, I am writing to express our full support for the subject bill to provide supplemental funds for the University of Guam in fiscal year 2025. Our organization works closely with UOG President Anita Borja Enriquez in reaching out to private individuals and businesses in our island community. Time and time again, we meet with local business owners that speak with pride of their many employees who are counted among over 20,000 UOG alumni. Government, military, and private employers benefit from a local hiring pool that is made more diverse through the various degree programs and courses of study offered at the university. In 1952, the Territorial College of Guam was created to produce teachers for an island in the wake of years of foreign occupation and war. Seventy-three years later, this WASC-accredited university provides public administrators, entrepreneurs, scientists, nurses, social workers, civil engineers, journalists, writers, accountants, historians, environmentalists, let's see, farmers, psychologists, therapists, artists, human resource specialists, marketing and management specialists, senators, lieutenant governors. Maybe one day we'll have a governor in there. These UOG alumni employees are truly valued by their employers. They are taxpayers and consumers that contribute to our island economy. They set an important example to their families and others in their circles of influence of the value and importance of achieving higher education. Some of them may attest that their degrees of higher education have helped them in achieving upward social mobility. To quote comedian Rob Schneider when he visited Guam in support of the UOG Endowment Foundation Scholarship fundraising event, "School is the most precious commodity because it can get you out of poverty. That makes the difference in your life." I strongly implore our legislators to support this bill, not only for the university, but for the community we live in that is impacted every day by its ability to fulfill its mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Senator Guthers, please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, honorable senators. It's a privilege to be here today again in this building with my university colleagues, with our leadership at the university, our border regent representatives, and of course, our students. I am here to support this bill, and I want to commend the new legislature and the leadership in the legislature and our Senator for Education Committee for introducing this bill and all the co-sponsors. I'm very optimistic with this new legislature. And I'm looking for good things to happen for our people and our island with all of your leadership and commitment to the community. You know, I've been part of the University of Guam, I hate to say it, for about 50 years. I actually grew up at the University of Guam. My first experience at the University of Guam was as a junior in high school at the Academy of Our Lady, where the whole junior class was brought to the University of Guam, then College of Guam, to take the SAT admission test for college. The proctor of that examination, by the way, was the late, former UOG president, Antonio Yamashita. When I went up to the university, then College of Guam at that time, I became very excited. And I told myself someday I'd like to come home after college abroad and teach or be part of the University of Guam family. And that's exactly what happened. I went off on a scholarship, a foreign student scholarship to the State National University of the Republic of the Philippines. At that time, we had gone through a serious typhoon on the island. And like most people on Guam, my family lost their home. My father's story collapsed. And it was very difficult for my parents to be able to afford to send me off island, to be honest with you, to the US mainland. So I applied for a scholarship abroad, and I received that scholarship. And that allowed me to pursue undergraduate studies and graduate studies at the University of the Philippines, finally graduating at the National School of Public Administration and Governance with a doctoral degree. I came home and I started teaching at the University of Guam and did it continuously until I finally retired. And then I was recruited to run for senator. During my time at the university, I was asked by the governor of Guam to temporarily leave UOG and to serve our island as the last director of public safety and the first acting chief of the Guam Police Department. So I've had a lot of different life experiences, but I've always been drawn back to the university. And my most appreciative role to me personally has been with the students, teaching. And I'm proud to say I do that now as a former professor and a current professor. And recently, I, I'm very proud of the fact that I was recognized by the university for my six years of service as vice president of Academic Affairs. So I have the historical background to tell you. The University of Guam is America's best secret when it comes to higher education institutions at the government level as a state-equivalent university. Our tuition is the third lowest in the United States. And we produce quality graduates. And we want to be able to continue doing that. We don't want students to be discouraged from coming to the University of Guam because they can't afford the tuition. We want our students to know, and potential students to know, that we are there to serve them. The University of Guam is keeping up with the demands of our community. We are adjusting programs. We're designing new types of programs. I'd like to share with you, with the permission of our president, that over the last three years, we have put in place a cybersecurity program at the School of Business and Public Administration. It is both a certificate program It is both a certificate program and a minor program. We have put in place a program for nonprofit organizational management. It is a certificate program and a minor program. And right now, we are in the process, and our graduate students are assisting us with these projects. We are designing a program to help you kickstart the Tomorrowland Trust program, as promised to the people of Guam. We're designing a plan for a public-private partnership, and we hope to be able to submit to you a feasibility study, proposed legislation, and a list of steps to take to really kick in the Tomorrowland Trust program as designed. At the same time, we are preparing a feasibility and implementation plan to start a high school senior program for high school students to come to the University of Guam and to study programs in business, public service, education, and public ad and criminal justice, so they can receive a certificate as a high school graduate, so they can start already working in the private sector and the public sector and the nonprofit sector with some kind of background that says they're ready to work. At the same time, they will continue their education at the university towards a bachelor's degree. You will hear about these programs soon, when the university is ready to announce it, when it goes through all the approval processes, including the charter school approval process, but it's a senior high school-level program, only one year senior year. The students will be at the University of Guam in a more formal way, where they can receive a certificate from the university upon completing this program. So I share this with you to let you know that the University of Guam is keeping up with what's needed in our community. We want to make sure we are meeting the needs of the private sector, the public sector, the nonprofit sector, and other sectors of society on Guam and within our region. So I ask you, probably as the oldest person here when it comes to institutional history at the University of Guam, please, let's keep the momentum going. There's going to be a lot of changes in our country at the national level. We may have to make some adjustments, but we want to be able to count on our legislature to support our educational institutions on Guam. And I'm here today to ask for your support on this supplemental appropriation for the University of Guam. Thank you very much.
Sis Massey, Dr. Senator Guthard, it was a very exciting testimony. I'm looking forward to the build-out of that Tomorrowland Trust, you know, association project you're working on.
The students, the graduate students are helping really well with this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everybody that has come here today to testify in support of this bill, students, leaders, border regents, Madam President. I think the only question I have, just from some of the testimony, just to be clear, is somebody testified that the cultural repository, that's not part of this, just so that we're -- because that was one of the reasons we needed additional funding on top of the four million. Is that correct?
Yes, the Guam Cultural Repository is not part of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only question I have, Mr. Chair. I'll continue to listen, and thank you.
Sis Massey, Senator Borja. Vice Speaker Ada, you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I'd just like to, you know, thank the University of Guam and, you know, the students also for coming up here to testify on this piece of legislation. And I know Dr. Guthard said that, you know, she thanks all the co-sponsors on the bill. I know my name ain't there, but, you know, where it counts is on the other side, right? No, but, no, thank you. And I think it's important to know that higher education on Guam is truly important. You know, more and more of our children need to start staying home to come to school, you know, go to the University of Guam and see what they'll be able to do. I mean, now with the School of Engineering, my son went to University of Arizona in Tucson, and he went to -- he did his engineering school out there and came back home. He goes, Dad, what am I going to do when I graduate? Should I come back home or stay here in the States? I said, Son, that's a decision you have to make on your own. I can't make that for you. So he decided to come home, and now, today, he's a PE in environmental engineering, and he used to work for NAFAC. And he was at his ten-year mark in NAFAC, and he turned around and he said, "I think I'm going to leave NAFAC." And I said, "Why would you want to do that?" He goes, "'Cause I want to do more for our island. I want to do more for our community." When you work for the military, you already know what you're going to do day in and day out. He goes, "I want to be a part of how things are on our island, and I want to make it better." And that's what we want to do here, right? We want to help make things better for our island, and higher education is doing the right thing. And I know that they were talking about rounding up to, what's it, twelve million? So we'll try and get what we can first, and we'll go with that. But always know that in sport of higher education is one thing that I have always told my kids that I do. I support higher education. All four of them had no choice but to go to college. The only choice they had was on-island or off-island, but higher education is always important, and I was always support for higher education. So thank you all for coming out and making this bill stronger by your testimonies and ensuring that, you know, your voice is heard. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for hearing this bill promptly, and hopefully we'll be able to get it on to our next session, which is in just a couple of weeks. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sis Massey, Mr. Vice Speaker Ada, and now we'll go to Senator Gumiutato.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks, everyone, for being with us this afternoon. Let me just jump in and just let me ask a couple of different questions. BBMR provided a fiscal note stating that there is sufficient net unobligated fiscal year 2025 general fund revenues to provide to the University of Guam with an additional $5.7 million in the current fiscal year. Also, the appropriation of the $5,750,984 that's proposed in Bill 5838 will ensure that the current employees of UOG are funded through these appropriations to include those that support accreditation-related priorities. Speaking of priorities, I just wanted to make a note, I think all of us are watching very carefully what's happening in Washington, DC, and I think that when we think of priorities, we're thinking, oh, my gosh, this hasn't happened before. But I just wanted to kind of go backwards a bit. In 1993, when I was completing my undergraduate degree at Cal State University of Bakersfield, the Clinton administration did just that. In 2009, when I was working at the office of the governor of Guam, President Barack Obama did the same thing. So what we're seeing today, quite frankly, is not completely unique. It is something that really we, as a government, has seen before, and I don't expect that's going to change anytime soon as a part of the American family. Speaking of priorities, I wanted to touch on a couple of things. As of January 24, 2024, UOG maintained a working list of Priority 1, 2, and Priority 3, preventative maintenance, replacement cycle investments, new projects, buildings for fiscal year 2025, requiring funding support that totals approximately $17 million. The CIP examples include, but we're not limited to, roof repairs, painting the UOG Cavill Fieldhouse, water meters, shut-off valves, backflow preventers, asbestos removal at the science and business offices, fire alarm systems. I just want to ask for the record, if you can please identify those Priority 1 projects, maybe this might be for Randy and the team, that have -- that UOG has been able to address since January 24, 2024?
Thank you, Senator. I'm Randy Weigand, Vice President of Finance and Administration at the university. We haven't done much. The one thing that we have been working on, roofing has been a problem, and after the storm, we were able to get some insurance money to do some work on some of the roofs. And so that's about the only thing on that list that we've been able to address.
All right. Thank you, Randy, for being so candid. Recognizing that a portion of Bill 5838 may be used for UOG CIPs, which -- or I should ask, which project or projects does UOG intend to prioritize in fiscal year 2025, and has UOG identified non-general fund sources to help pay for a portion or the entirety of any of these projects in the current fiscal year?
Thank you, Senator. The, yeah, our initial ask was like $12 million that had a lot of other things in it, and the 5.7 represents the salaries that we need to get through the end of the year. So there's no -- we don't have a plan right now for those funds to be used for capital improvements.
Thank you again for your honesty today. On December 11, 2020, the governor enacted Bill 197-35, which is now Public Law 35-114, which is relative to providing UOG with the freedom and independence to diversify its revenue sources, which requires the flexibility to enter into partnerships that will provide revenue and allow for UOG to compete in the changing market for institutions of higher ed, brought on by what we're seeing, obviously, with the digital revolution we're all experiencing. With respect to Section 13 of Public Law 35-114, which allows UOG to lease certain properties for a period of up to but not exceeding 30 years without legislative approval, what exactly has UOG worked on using the authority it was granted nearly five years ago in order to create public-private partnerships as well as to diversify the revenue streams of the university as the law was intended?
Senator, thank you for the question. The main thing we've done with that is to lease out our hatchery. We hadn't been very successful at trying to run that ourselves, so we leased it to a private company in a private-public-private partnership with the intention that their success would lead to additional revenues coming to the university. Unfortunately, the owner of the contract died last year, and so we've seen some revenues, but it hasn't really been realized to the extent that we had been expecting. But that's really so far the only lease that we've gotten into under that bill.
Thank you, Randy. And I think, as I asked that, I think about the intent of the bill and thinking about what we need to be doing moving forward and looking at different sources. Obviously, our students, when they are hearing their administration talk about these other things that need to be done, obviously, for them, it's the end result is what would come back and support our students. So I'm hoping that the bill, as it moves forward, and these other opportunities, especially as we get into your budget hearings a bit later in the year, that maybe we can look at these as ways to help diversify the funds that are happening and occurring at the University of Guam. Thanks again for all being here today. Appreciate you, and hopefully I'll take you up on your lunch offer.
Sis Massey, Senator Gumiutato. Senator Lujan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, panel, for being here, of course, Doc, and your management team, of course, the Institute of Government, and everyone else that is here to testify. Thank you very much, again, as the former vice chair for Committee on Higher Education in the previous legislature. Thank you very much, Doc, for keeping in constant communication and contact in regards to, of course, the shortfall that was, yeah, given to the University of Guam, and as my commitment to yourself and to the university that we will, you know, do our greatest table to find the revenue. The nice thing about sitting here next to the chairman is we share offices, so when we put our names to funding bills, there's a great possibility that there's funding. That being said, yeah, I'd be remiss if I didn't, of course, recognize, so I think she split already, Dr. Guthard, who I served with in the previous legislature as well. And she had mentioned about, you know, the things that you guys are doing and moving forward and a lot of different things that Guam is in need of. Likewise, you know, she's right about this current legislature, the 38th Guam Legislature, very progressive in moving forward and looking at, of course, regressive bills and policies that maybe have worked in the past, but now we see different challenges, and those bills may have worked in the past, but moving forward, those things are hindrance now in our economic prosperity, like even for the university. So those are the things that we have to look at and either repeal or amend. And one of the things that, of course, is the committee that I chair, and it just falls in line with what you guys are doing, is I chair the committee of not just tourism but also transportation, of course, aeronautics, maritime, and ground transportation and utilities, federal and foreign affairs as well. And just the day before yesterday, we introduced a bill. It's actually a historic kind of bill because, yeah, we built the airport out to expand, and now they're ready for expansion. And, you know, the big seller that Guam has is it's America and Asia. But when investors come to Guam, we see that the regressive policies that we have is not an enticement to stay or to invest. So it's a deterrent, and, you know, we have lost out in tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars in regards to investments here, the island of Guam. And just the day before yesterday, again, we introduced a bill to look at the airport properties to build out, and we're looking, of course, we have 11 co-sponsors in the bill that removes the five-year lease, and we're looking at 50-year lease, a 50-year lease now, which is very conducive for folks who want to invest big money. And that's, again, a, you know, that's an industry standard. That's the minimum. That's the minimum at this point. So, I mean, you see bankers out here as well, and they say, yeah, I mean, you know, a home mortgage is either 25, 30 years, you know? So if one's were to invest in tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, five years, they'll say, thank you, wow, we wish we could do business with you, but five years is just not going to cut it. So, again, it's great news, and thank you for all that you do. I'm glad you have an engineering school now, and it works great because the airlines that are looking to come in here to build, again, their mechanic and servicing for their airlines for high-paying jobs. And they require, again, you know, more higher-level technical work, and it's in line with what you guys are doing, and likewise, being able to entice, you know, some of our folks, either mechanics or engineers that maybe have left and can't find jobs equivalent to what they're doing right now, be able to come home and do that. So collectively, we have to speak with one voice. We are one Guam. We are one experience. So that being said, I want to thank all of you, and I will, of course, I'm a co-sponsor of this bill, and I wholeheartedly support this, and it was great seeing all of you last night as well, at Cars Plus Night. We'll continue to support all your efforts because your success will be the success of the agencies that I oversee as well. Thank you very much.
Sis Massey, Senator Lujan. Senator Cavill, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Half a day and buenos, everyone. First, I'd like to thank every single one who offered testimony. Thank you. And I'd like to thank the author of the bill for inviting me to co-sponsor this bill. Senator Vince Borja, thank you. It's nice to see so many familiar faces in this room, and based on your testimony, it's really, it hits me because there's so many motivated individuals waiting for the $5,750,984. Very motivated room full of people. Now, I co-authored or co-sponsored this bill for a reason because I believe that, which statistics shows that an educated community is very much more progressive than the ones that are behind when it terms -- when it comes to education. So, obviously, I'd like to push for the betterment of our education system in Guam. I fully support this. I just had a tour of UOG, and I'm happy to say that I've seen how it really grew over the years, programs, resources have expounded. And on that note, I really, truly commend UOG for all the efforts, resources, programs, and things that you've done over the years for our community, and I would encourage that you guys continue on, and hopefully myself along with my colleagues here will be there for you guys all the time. Now, I wanted to express that I fully support Bill Number 58-38COR, which allocates much-needed funding to the University of Guam. Investing in our island's future, in our island's only public university, ensures that students receive a high-quality education, supports critical infrastructure and improvements, and it strengthens the accreditation efforts. So that's actually basically why I support this effort, and this legislation is a commitment to our students, our faculty, and the long-term success of our community. A well-funded UOG means a stronger future for our island, a stronger future for Guam, and I stand with my colleagues in prioritizing education for our community. Now, I don't really have much questions to ask, but it's more like curious questions, very simple. I just want to know what are the mechanics in place to track spending and ensure accountability, and will the public have access to financial reports detailing how the money is used?
Thank you, Senator. We, these funds are going to go in our general fund, and they're basically just going to be used for salaries. We do publish our financials on a monthly basis and put them on our website. We do publish our financials on a monthly basis and put them on our website. Anyone can see what's going on. We have budget reports that will help you determine where the funds are being spent, but it's basically just going to be for salaries and wages.
Thank you, sir. That's all, that's just my curious question for me. And on that note, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you again.
Thank you, Senator Cavill. And before I have a closing statement, I as well don't have any questions, and the reason why is this issue of this appropriation basically has been, you know, discussed at length in the current fiscal year that we're in, and the requirements, and of course, you know, the shortfall. And so I'll give you my views on that in a moment, but I wanted to recognize those who also gave written testimony, and then I'll go to the author in just a moment. So we also have written testimony from Anima, sorry if I murdered this name, Vargasis, DNPRN UOG, Raymond DS Anderson, PhD UOG, Hiro Kurashina, PhD UOG, Catherine R. Cavill, former Board Regent, UOG, Deborah Leon Guerrero, UOG, former Senator Eileen Yamashita, PhD, and also Lea May Majares, student at UOG. Once again, just a couple of comments that I have before I go to the author to close. You know, one of the things that we've had a lot of discussion with at the Chamber of Commerce and throughout our entire campaigns particularly, was outside of the budget constraints of the government, was a discussion on how do we expand our economy? How do we build beyond tourism that we know is currently, you know, having its difficulties, and we need to revive that? And then we know that the current spending levels of the military buildup at some time, you know, are going to trail off. And my number one answer to that question every time, besides, you know, the good efforts of Senator Lujan and many other senators who are introducing expansion of our economy pieces of legislation, is for investment to come to Guam, we have to have an educated and trained workforce. And yourselves at UOG and all of your faculty and staff are at the forefront of providing for that opportunity. We've heard a doctor testify. We've heard our students testify to what they absolutely know. There's no question, University of Guam, we want to keep as many of our students here. But when they do go abroad, they easily find higher education going all the way up the ladder and post-secondary and then postgraduate, you know, degrees. So there's no question about exactly what the fundamentals you have and what we need. Your engineering program is premier at this point. I get comments from those engineering firms and even from, you know, the MilCon folks that they're coming after every graduate that you're putting out. There's a huge competition right now for engineers and project managers and all the disciplines. Accounting is huge right now, so I'm glad that Doc mentioned that as well. We've got so much to do to be able to where we really continue to have and produce this workforce on these very, very lucrative, high-paying jobs that people can support their families and continue to make Guam a better place. We know our sister institutions do a fine job too. GCC is doing a wonderful job, Trades Academy, you know, but with the build-out that you currently have now and with the tour that I went on, with all of the construction and the buildings you're bringing forward, and I'll make this final point, it's a little bit special to me because my wife and one of my daughters is a nurse, and our daughter graduated at UOG and is thriving at the Guam Memorial Hospital. And now that you're expanding upwards to have larger, you know, cohorts of the nursing program, it's just one immediate effect that we can realize, even in this and next fiscal year, as we continue to graduate nurses, is the hospital having to be able to not have travel nurses, which are exponentially more expensive than our nurses. And our nurses here in Guam, as far as I'm concerned, are the best, best in the world, I'm just going to call it. And so the bottom line is that this is why, I believe, it's going to be tight this fiscal year, you know, things are, as I said, the current request for appropriations for excess revenues in fiscal year 2025 is now, you know, oversubscribed by $38 million. But I think this body is going to continue to recognize the investment opportunities and those, you know, priorities of education and the yield of helping our people and this workforce is going to have to be very close to the forefront. There are other priorities we'll look at, but that will come post, post-making sure that the audit comes out on time as well. It's a much different discussion, but I know you've all done a very good job in terms of accomplishing your ability to provide your numbers and your, you know, non-qualified audits as well, so I congratulate you on that. That's really all I have, but I'd like to now give the opportunity for the author to, before the author closes, Senator Lujan has asked for one more comment.
Just real quick, I forgot to mention this, and now I just saw him, Mr. Mark Mendiola. So when Mr. Mark Mendiola's confirmation hearing comes up, could you all show up for that as well? His, yeah, his appointment letter had reached my office already to serve in the Port Authority of Guam. So I'm just waiting for one more appointee to come in, so I have three of them, but his appointment hearing will be coming up here shortly. So make sure all of you come out and testify on his behalf, okay?
I think you can tell that all the senators are here today, our oversight chairs for different committees, so way to get that in, Senator Lujan. Senator Gumutato, you may close. Yeah, Senator Gumutato, you don't get another chance. Senator Borja, you can close.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to my colleagues here today and their support. I wanted to share though, because Senator Sabrina Salas-Metanani, she expresses her support for this bill. She had to go to the governor's office for a meeting with the Veterans Commission. But I also want to extend my gratitude to everyone who took the time to come testify today, and especially the students, faculty, and staff of the University of Guam. Your stories, perspectives, and testimonials are invaluable and highlights the real impact of our decisions. Bill 58-38 is crucial for the University of Guam, and it's about supporting our institution that nurtures our communities, leaders, and innovators. This funding is not just a number. It's a lifeline that will allow the university to sustain its operations, maintain its infrastructure, and hope its standard, uphold its standard of excellence. I strongly urge all my colleagues to support this bill, reaffirming our commitment to the educational foundation for our island, and let's ensure that the University of Guam remains a strong and vibrant center of learning for future generations. Thank you once again to everybody involved today for your dedication and commitment to advancing education in Guam. Sisus Maasi for your support and collaboration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Maasi, Senator Borja. And a couple more written testimonies that have been submitted by Deborah Leon Guerrero in support, and also Raymond DS Anderson, PhD, professor of communication and media, also in support. So at this time, this will conclude this afternoon's public hearing on Bill Number 5838. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on this bill within seven days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duenez as chairman of the committee, and mailed to 163 West Chalan Santo Papa in Hagatnia. You may also send your testimonies to senator.duenez@guamlegislature.gov. This afternoon's public hearing is now adjourned, and the time? 4:04, or 4:03 or 4:04. Sisus Maasi for your attendance, and everyone have a great weekend. Bibay UOG!